We'll open tonight's committee of the whole meeting for the December 3 city council meeting. At this point in time, the council should have gotten their minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting from November the 19th, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, do I have a move to approve?
So move.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are carried. Building Board of Adjustments, Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Beth Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. Term begins immediately and ends November the 2nd, 2023. And this position does require an architect, and I would like to nominate Nicholas Van Syke.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second for Nicholas Van Syke. Do I have any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Mr. Van Syke, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we'll approve him, appoint him later on in the agenda. Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yes, we have one vacancy, an unexpired term beginning immediately and ending March the 8th, 2021, and I would like to nominate Dana Camp.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Ms. Camp. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Ms. Camp for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Camp will be appointed later on in our agenda. Auburn Municipal Court Annual Report, Judge McGoughlin.
Thank you, Mayor Andrews, ladies and gentlemen. Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and give our annual report. Not only is it statutorily required, but I think it also gives me an opportunity to kind of brag on my department, some of the things we've accomplished this year, and kind of set y'all up for where we intend to go in the near future. I apologize for the quality of my PowerPoint. I was an accountant, not a visual arts major, so it's going to be very... Ned in the first grade reader, please don't take off her style. First, who are we? This year, there's, again, six full-time employees, seven counting me. We've got four full-time magistrates, one assistant court clerk who does most of our docketting and most of the paperwork for me. We have a chief clerk who is also the assistant court administrator. He handles day-to-day duties such as HR, payroll, things of that nature. And then, of course, me as the judge and the ultimate court administrator. We have a part-time employee who helps us with filing, and as you know, we're attempting to move across the street. She's done a great job helping us get some old documents archived and cleaned up. And then we have three part-time employees, our prosecutor, Ms. Sam Copeland from the Davidson Law Firm here in town, Mr. Todd Crutchfield, our public defender, and we have a Spanish interpreter who helps us every Thursday afternoon with our Spanish citizens. As I said, we have six full-time employees, and they handle a wonderful caseload. I think we, see in a minute, we handled about 21,000 cases last year. There are municipalities that have larger populations and staff's about three times what we do. Their population's not much larger. For instance, Tuscaloosa, I think maybe 25,000 people more, and I think they have 23 full-time employees. And we visited Saraland yesterday to look at their computer system. They have about 17,000 citizens and they have seven magistrates. So I feel like we do a very good job with a compact staff. As what we do, we are tasked with adjudicating all the traffic tickets, misdemeanor arrests pursuant to state law, and any non-arrest violations pursuant to city ordinance. That includes zoning violations, people that don't pay their business taxes, barking dogs, all the fun stuff that we love to see every Tuesday morning. We also deal with all parking tickets written in the city of Auburn, which were, I think, about 14,000 last year. How do we do it? Data entry, we're trying to get away from that. Well, we've got a new computer system that's coming online. Right now, all of our tickets that are written in the city are electronically downloaded, so that's taken some of the data entry out. We still have to do hand, what I call hand jamming with warrants, and when the police come in and have somebody arrested, we have to do that data entry by hand. We also issue warrants. All the employees except me are sworn magistrates, which means if somebody has a complaint, they can come in, we'll raise their hand, put them under oath, and we'll take their story. If they've got enough probable cause to have a warrant issued for somebody's arrest, we will do so at that time. That's probably the most serious task our magistrates do on a daily basis. We take it very serious when we deprive somebody of their freedom, and all our magistrates are highly trained and make sure that we don't do that without significant probable cause to do so. Then we also have a standard customer service function. We take payments at the front desk every day and over the phone and manage court dockets. And then finally, the thing y'all need me for is court, which we do. Thursday mornings at 8:00, we have arraignments. That is the first appearance where a defendant has an opportunity to come in and plead either guilty or not guilty to their charge. Our typical Thursday docket is somewhere between 300 and 500 citizens. Just don't get me wrong, that many don't show up, but that's how many you're supposed to show up. And probably anywhere from 150 to 300 will show up on a given Thursday. We have trials every Thursday afternoon at 1:00, and those people are usually represented by attorneys. And we have citizens' court on the first and third Tuesdays of every month. What that is, is if neighbors have a dispute, body domestic violence issues, those come in on those Tuesday mornings, and we offer everybody an attorney, and then we'll tee it up, and I'll settle if we can't get them to work it out between themselves. We also have compliance hearings on the second, fourth, and fifth Tuesdays. That's where we try and get people who've already been through the court system but either still owe the city money or still have counseling requirements, we try and get them completed and get them done with so they don't have to come back down here and clogging up our docket, so to speak. This is where the accountant me loves, this is we talk about numbers. Again, last year, there were 20,526 new cases filed. We disposed of a little over 21,000. And of that number, 13 total were appealed, all those being non-traffic cases. That's something I'm very proud of, and it's not because of me, it's because our officers make good cases with the police department. They don't bring us a lot of cases that we have to worry about. They're good, solid cases to be prosecuted. It's a testament to our city prosecutor. She handles the cases, and if there's something that needs doing out of the ordinary, she takes care of that. We don't have a lot of cases that get appealed. Because I think I've made a bad judgment, most of those 13, I will tell you, are people that got sentenced to jail time, and they decided they would rather appeal their case and stay out a couple of months rather than go ahead and... But that low appeal number is a tribute to our police and our city attorney. As you can see, there was a 3.3% increase over cases handled in fiscal year 2018, and we handled 13,000 and some change in new parking tickets. It's easy in this position to just kind of get in a habit of churning the butter, so to speak. You know, they come in, we put them out, they come back in, we put them out. And as long as we're content to do that, folks will keep coming down here and never change. My goal has always been to try and help people and get them out of here. Whatever they've done, we want to try and rehabilitate them, get them back on a different path so we don't keep seeing them every two to three weeks. And this is what we're fixing to talk about now, some of the ways we try and do that. First of all, of course, it's a statewide youthful offender program. Anybody that's under 21, when they commit their first crime, can come in here and ask to be treated as youthful offender. We'll do a small background check on them. If they don't have anything on their record, we will most likely treat them as youthful offender. What happens then is their file is sealed, it's not open to discovery by anybody other than police departments. It gives them a chance to walk out of here with a clean record. That is mainly a benefit to our college students, I think. The city also has a widely used diversion program. That is open to everyone, regardless of age, who has no prior drug and alcohol convictions. I would say the misdemeanor we see most often is going to be either DUI or possession of drugs and paraphernalia. And just because you turn 21 doesn't make you more intelligent than you were the day you were 20. I know that's a hard concept for some of our legislators, but one thing my predecessor, Joe Bailey, always had a problem with was you're eligible for youthful offender one day, the next day you automatically got smart and shouldn't break the law, and you have to have an adult conviction. So we designed this program to kind of help in that situation where people over 21 have never been in trouble before. What they're required to do is 24 hours of counseling. They have to do four Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous meetings, and then they have to complete community service based on a number that our city attorney develops, and that's going to depend on the severity of the charges, the number of charges, and some of the facts. You know, she'll look into the actual underlying facts of the charge, and if it's something egregious, they'll do a lot more community service than the 20-hour minimum. But again, this allows individuals with a clean record to come in here, be addressed, you know, deal with the crime they committed, and still come out on the other side with an opportunity to be a productive citizen, have a clean record. Community service is another great place where we try and help people. I'm trying to think that when I took over, there was almost $3 million owed to the city in the municipal court. I think that may be... Eric is not going to help me. I think that may be correct. But the problem is, we don't have a whole lot of way to enforce people paying that. We've got a limited window of opportunity to enforce that and collect it. So one thing we've started doing is let people work off their fines, if you will, at $10 an hour of community service. We started in 2015 with Becky and the Parks Department. Now we have moved over and are using the Environmental Services, Keep Auburn Beautiful people, and they have a trash detail that runs Friday and Saturday, and sometimes during the week, they'll accommodate these folks. But last year alone, we had over almost 11,000 hours of community service, which is roughly five full-time city employees that we didn't have to pay for picking up trash and cleaning up the city. Payment plans, again, we don't have a whole lot we can do other than try and give them some time to pay. If they can't pay it, again, we resort to community service. I sometimes think that community service sounds like a fate worse than death to people because there's no way they can pay it, they don't have a dime to their name, and I say, well, fine, we'll see on the trash truck Saturday morning, and money starts falling out of pockets. So I don't know, excuse me, I don't know what they've heard about community service that's so awful, but nobody seems to want to do it. And then, again, our last resort, if they won't pay or do the community service, I can hold them in contempt of court and put them in jail. But again, that's our last resort. One of the growing issues we have, not only in the city of Auburn, but I think around the country, is mental health issues in municipal court area. Very seldom do we have, I think in the last 20 years I've been associated with municipal court, I can think of two cases. We had someone who was mentally not fit to stand trial, which is the standard, but every month, we have somebody who has some sort of mental issue and needs help that I'm not going to be able to give them through the criminal justice system. They don't need to go to jail, they need to get help. The jail has a staff psychologist, and we work with them. We also have some local people that come down from time to time and offer to help us, and we've taken advantage of that. But that is something that's growing and something we're going to have to address in the future, and we're constantly trying to figure out how to do that and make sure we take care of people, not only running them through the system, but getting them the help they need. What's next? As I said, we toured Saraland's court yesterday. They have the same computer system that we just bought and are installing. We hope when we get it in sometime, hopefully in March or April, that it'll allow us to be paperless. And I know our IT director makes fun of me when I say that because there's no such thing as paperless, but it certainly will do away with paper files. We will still have to print some things and have some paper, but we won't be retaining it. We will be archiving everything. It'll certainly make our jobs a lot easier. Court will move faster because we won't have to wait for people to walk in and out with files. We think it'll save us having to hire some employees in the future because it'll cut down on some of the paper and other things we've been having to produce. I didn't put this in the presentation, but I had hoped to get something ready. We've been working on a new ordinance that I'm going to talk to Ms. Buston about and hopefully get presented in the near future. We've had some issues with people getting into cars, with college students and things of that nature, and we're certainly working hard to remedy that, and hopefully we'll have that moving forward shortly. But otherwise, I just appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of Auburn and be glad to take any questions or comments that you have.
I just got two questions, a little amount of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed on the first slide, you said something about Spanish interpreters. Is that the only interpreter that you have, or just Spanish?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, it's Spanish. She's been with the court system for five or six years now. She and I have had a discussion about learning Korean. We have a growing Korean population, and most of them, when they come to court, are nice enough to bring a relative or a work colleague that can translate for us, but we do need somebody else down here in the few cases where they don't bring somebody. We have several officers that speak Spanish. I don't think we have any that speak Korean.
And the other question is, with the community services, 20 hours minimum, what's the maximum hours to...
Well, the most I've seen is 180, but he started out at 45, didn't do what he was supposed to, and got it cranked up to 90, and then he got it cranked up to 180. And he finally got it done. But it all depends on the severity of the charges, the number of charges, and what message our city prosecutor thinks she needs to send to the defendant.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Judge McGoughlin?
Appreciate all your work, man. Thank you for your staff. You got one?
Oh, I just wanted to thank the judge and their staff. I did have an opportunity at one point in my life to work before his court. Being on council, I'm not allowed to do that anymore, but when I was there, the judge always ran, it was very efficient, very fair, but just. It was always fair, but just. But everyone on the staff was always very friendly, and you guys do a phenomenal job for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We feel like that's what we're supposed to do, is be fair to everybody and try and do it in an efficient manner, so thank you.
Good, Judge.
Thank you, folks.
Before we put this next thing, Judge did have a...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I got the word. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion of student housing, and again, I appreciate Councilman Parsons and Councilman Dawson allowing this to usurp the discussion we were going to have regarding some things they have brought forward, and we'll be having that work session in a week from Friday to talk about those things at this time. Just to kind of review where we've been, once this council was sat last November of 18, not long after that, we established a student housing task force that has been evaluating, discussing, and debating the subject of student housing in our community for basically the last 12 months. That was a very diverse group of people that included folks that were in the private sector, that represented folks in the student housing business, that included people from Auburn University, as well as a student, and included some folks from our planning commission. And we looked at a lot of different things, including having some kind of learning sessions with different groups of students on campus that was put together through the Student Affairs over at Auburn, which we were grateful for. During that time, our staff worked on a comprehensive inventory, which our city had never taken part of as far as doing it ourselves, to establish exactly how many housing units were potentially, where beds were in this town. And we also were working with the university to understand what their goals and objectives were with their enrollment going into the future. And that was, that took a while to get, and we did receive that finally, as y'all have read recently. It was established at the most recent Board of Trustees meeting as to what Auburn University's plans are. And so what we have learned through this is that we have got a large number of beds that we believe that number could be anywhere from 37,000, around that number of beds that have been dedicated and built for students. There are some, some in this room, that would argue that that number is even greater than that, but we know, we believe that it's at least that. We also know that Auburn University has decided that their undergraduate enrollment is going to stay right at the 25,000 mark. Their graduate enrollment is going to stay around five, with the potential to grow up to six, but we know that that is going to be steady. It's going to remain where it is. And so with 31,000 students and 37,000 beds, I believe that that means that we need to make some determinations and some decisions about, is this something we need to address or not? It's fair to say that in that 31,000, Auburn University does not count the VCOM students, which is the medical school on campus, which is around 700, so you could add 700 to that number. And we believe, and there's no way to quantify this, but there's certainly hundreds of Tuskegee University students that live in our community as well that cut into that number. But all in all, it's my opinion that we are oversubscribed for student housing beds in our community, and it's time for the council, after a year of study, debate, discussion, to determine whether this is something that we should make a change in, to look at altering the way we govern this, and to talk about it. I appreciate all the work on the task force, appreciate Jay and Tommy's efforts on the task force. At this point in time, I think there's a couple of things we could do. We could do nothing and let the free market take place and just let it take its course. That's certainly an option. We could ask the staff to come up with some ideas for us and continue to let the free market continue to move forward and allow new developments to come in as we vet and decide whether there are changes we want to make. Or we could try to call a halt to student housing projects for a certain length of time, and in that time, ask our staff, along with us as elected representatives, to try to come up with some ideas that we think would make the student housing situation in Auburn more palatable and give us a better outlook for the future. What I do think is we need to talk about it, and we need to discuss this as a council, and so that's why we're here tonight, to do that. I will offer an idea to begin our discussion tonight as a path to take for the future. Tonight, I'd like to ask the council's approval to direct our city manager, Jim Buston, to draft an ordinance to be considered by the council at our next meeting on December the 17th, 2019, that would enact a 90-day moratorium on student housing for the following reasons. In 2013, 2015, and 2018, the Danta report identified purpose-built student housing absorption rate of approximately 400 beds a year. Currently, new purpose-built student housing beds permitted or under construction substantially exceed the recommended annual absorption rates. Second, the Auburn University Board of Trustees has adopted an undergraduate enrollment policy on November the 22nd, 2019, which states that the total undergraduate enrollment be maintained at approximately 25,000 students, that each new freshman class be comprised of approximately 5,000 students, and some other things, and I'll read these off. Alabama residents compose approximately 60% of each freshman class, that qualified undergraduate transfer students continue to be recruited and admitted, and then when space is not available in Auburn, undergraduate applicants can be invited to consider Auburn University Montgomery, and that's comprehensively. Also, to update the enrollment strategy that has not been evaluated or considered as part of the Danta reports. During this 90-day moratorium period, it is expected that some or all of the following issues will be discussed and evaluated. To update the Danta report in light of new information about Auburn University's enrollment, to consider bedroom density, to consider traffic volumes, to consider pedestrian safety, to consider construction material types, building code requirements, and to consider incentives aimed at older multifamily housing stock to encourage the reduction or elimination of existing units. To summarize, what I'd like the council to consider is asking the city manager to create an ordinance that would give us a 90-day period, to stop all purpose-built student housing that is not already in the system, that has not already been submitted, and to ask the staff to work diligently during that 90-day period of time to come up with some ideas that we could vet, discuss. I would expect there to be multiple meetings with this council, with the staff, to evaluate these ideas, talk about these ideas, be able to talk about these ideas and potential new policies to the public, and then come back in 90 days, hopefully with something that we can take forward and vote on. That's what I would like to ask the council to do tonight. Now it's time for questions, comments, thoughts.
Well, I feel like we... Go ahead. I feel like we need to do something because I'm afraid we might run our roads and streets, and I'm also a little worried that we may even outgrown our police division at this time. I know we don't need to add more police before we continue to build, but the only concern I got is it going to be for just 90 days? Are we going to try to go on from there further, or are we just going to, are we going to cut it completely? No student housing building, or set like for anything above 15 or 20 units so we don't affect the smaller developers? That's what we really want to see, is the smaller developments, more so than these larges we're getting downtown. I know there's a lot of them still to go up. So that's my only question. I totally agree what you're saying, we got to do something, I feel like, but I want to make sure we don't make a hasty decision and go too far with it.
Jim, would you, you're a member of the staff, talk about the purpose-built student housing being the area that we're discussing here tonight, and all of it as opposed to a piece of it?
So I think from the perspective that we're looking at is that there is an overabundance of student houses, of student beds in our market, or if not an overabundance right now, there soon will be an overabundance of beds in the market. So for a short period of time, a 90-day window, we would ask that no additional student beds be built, to give us and the council time to come up with some potential remedies to that absorption rate that we found in the Danta report. If, in the last Danta report that we got, they were still working under the assumption that the university was going to grow at the rate which we thought 500 students per year. So we expect that an absorption rate in a new study would even be less than the 400 beds per year. So looking at student beds in its totality is what we would want to do in the first 30 days from a legal perspective, because that is what we believe we have an over-subscription of.
Does that include ADDUs?
That would include ADDUs. That would include every purpose-built student housing. It would not include housing that is market rate or, you know, the traditional apartment complexes. Obviously, it wouldn't include single-family or duplexes or things like that.
Or townhomes.
Or townhomes, right. Anything, basically, the purpose-built student housing, which would be the private dormitories, which are the big buildings, and the ADDUs, which are specifically built for students. for students.
I have no problem with the recommendation that the mayor made. I just wanted to ask a question. The 37,000 beds that we're talking about, is that just Auburn University, or are we including the university in Montgomery? Or, and the same thing with the enrollment of students?
Those are beds that our staff counted that are here in Auburn. Yeah. They're located here in Auburn. Would you want instant implementation of the moratorium, or are you thinking of implementing at a date certain in the future? I know, I'm assuming we'll have a proposed ordinance by the 17th is our next meeting?
Yes.
Is that, Jim, what are, do we have options on that? Are there legal requirements with advertising that we could?
We'd have, we'd have to look. I would expect that, so tonight, we decide if the council's going to instruct us to, to work on an ordinance. I would expect that we would want to bring that ordinance at the next meeting in December, but I don't think it would go into effect probably until January, the 1st of January, maybe a little later. I don't know what, what advertising requirements there would be for that particular moratorium. And then the 90 days would start after that. Obviously, there would have to be some grandfathering. Those, those projects that are already in the, in the hopper would, would be grandfathered. We'd probably want to give a certain period of time that you need to get your projects in by X date, otherwise you fit into that 90-day moratorium window. So we would have to look from a legal perspective if there's any time advertisement constraints before we can start it. But I would assume sometime in January.
Are we going to be inventing a will on this, or do we already have some, a game plan? I know you've identified some areas, but, I mean, to create good policy, is 90 days going to be enough to, I mean, I'm just trying to, I just don't want to put a Band-Aid on a shotgun wound.
Staff has been working on a variety of options for some time now. We have, we have internally been discussing many of the things that the mayor read. What we have to do, we have possibly some other options as well. But what we have to do now is kind of put pen to paper and get that down in such a way that we can vet it, again, vet it legally, make sure that we aren't violating any, any state, federal laws as well as local laws. Most of the time, I think, we'll be researching, we have the ideas, researching other municipalities who have put these ideas into place, and seeing what type of benefit it has, it has been to them. We don't want to recommend something that someone else has found not to be something that we want to do. But I think these things that the mayor mentioned, staff has already been working on.
Yeah. Is there any mechanism for a temporary halt or moratorium, or whatever terminology you want to use, that would commence now while you're working on this? I know long-term, we need an ordinance change. But is there something that could be put in place in the interim, while you're working, that would give us a temporary halt?
I'm not sure. The 90-day moratorium is what we would put in place while we're working on this.
90-day moratorium would only be in effect, okay, wait a minute, let me back up then. So the 90 days is for you to put together the ordinance?
No, no. What I, and mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Go ahead.
What I'm assuming the mayor is asking you to do is to ask the staff between now and our next meeting to put together an ordinance which would establish a 90-day moratorium on student housing. In that 90 days, while we are, while we have a moratorium, staff will be working on remedies when we come out of the moratorium on laws that we would ask you to enact to help us get back into line with the absorption rate of the number of bedrooms we can absorb based on Auburn University's new policies.
So what would be the earliest date that the moratorium would be implemented, be in effect?
My assumption is sometime in, in January, probably early January, but I would, I would have to look at what our advertisement constraints are for the ordinance, saying we're going to do a moratorium starting when, and how long that adverti, but I would assume sometime in January.
The period of time between tonight and when you bring it back to the council, nothing changes?
Nothing changes. Council has to pass a law to enact a moratorium. Soon as the council could do that, would be at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Is there a reason that you established 90 days, Mr. Mayor?
Bob, I believe, in talking with staff, we felt like that was a reasonable amount of time for the staff to be able to provide the kind of information we would need. I'm also personally didn't want it to last, I mean, there's no sense in it being any longer than it needs to be. And I think 90 days holds it's all accountable, that we've got to get, got work to do, and we can't waste any time. And staff feels like that they've, since they're kind of ahead of the game, that they can offer us some thoughts and ideas within that window.
How long would it take for you guys to write the ordinance? Is it going to take the whole two weeks, or could you guys do it sooner and then we could have a special meeting?
I would expect we would want to vet it sufficiently, and it's not something that I think we would want to take lightly. I would want to have the whole two weeks, yes.
You're going to have it vetted extensively by the city attorney on the Sunday.
Yes.
There would also be a public hearing that night, too.
So the previously written ordinance for a 90-day, for a moratorium, I'm not sure how long it was, that was withdrawn from consideration, is, I assume that that is your base point, your start point? We had a moratorium written and in place, and then council never voted on it in the past, but there was, not this council, previous council.
So there was a moratorium that the council did pass, and in fact, that was a, it was even extended. It was passed and extended. That moratorium was based, though, on waiting on the downtown master plan. The downtown master plan was going into effect. So the moratorium was, was put in place so that it would give the downtown master plan time to be finished, and then whatever came out of that, whatever rules and laws came out of that downtown master plan, went towards ending the moratorium. So I think that particular moratorium lasted for about six months or more.
Any other questions? Okay. So at this time, is the council okay with asking the city manager to draft an ordinance that we will vote on in two weeks that would enact a 90-day moratorium on student housing? We've got this document here that I read tonight, as long as, as well as some backup information that goes over Auburn University's enrollment policy. Jim, we can provide this to the council?
Yes, I can send you via email.
Sure, you can all have that. So is the council okay with us doing that, moving forward with that?
I'm good with it, mayor, but I still, I want to reiterate, make sure we have it approved through the city, I mean, the city attorney, because I worry we may get on some shaky ground with it legally.
I totally agree. He was, he's been involved to get us to this point right here. You're exactly right, Tommy, and I heed, I heed your concern.
And the main thing I want to make sure is that we're, the 90 days, I just want to create stability in our, in our markets, and I just want to make sure that's going to be enough time, really be robust about this, and not get to a position where we've got to address another moratorium in a year or three years, we can actually put a good policy for it. And you think, Jim, that's time to present a good policy, to really look at it and vet it.
I think staff can present a good policy. I think one of the things the mayor and I discussed is, how much time do you want to give the development community, you know, before that policy goes into effect? So it could possibly be that if you wanted to vet it extensively through the development community, 90 days is enough for us. But you may extend it if you want more time for the development community to weigh in on it.
And I'm not saying, 90 days is good, 30 days, whatever, I mean, or more, just enough that we can create, we're not going to be having to extend, and then people that are looking to invest, and then change, or they're going to, it's just back, stop and go, stop and go. I just want to create stability in our community. And so that's my main thing there.
I hear you. I agree with you. Okay. So is the council okay moving forward with asking the staff to create an ordinance that we will vote on in two weeks? Is everybody okay with that? I'm looking both directions? Okay. Mr. Buston, if you will move forward with that. All right. Questions on the agenda for city manager Buston?
Mayor, we do have one item of other business that came in late. It is a alcohol beverage license for a bar restaurant, and we'd like to add that as 11A.
Any other questions on the agenda for the city manager?
Just one. I've been in Auburn for 59 years. Where is Main Street?
Where is, I'm sorry?
Main Street. Are you talking about this? Okay.
Yes. So that, this development is in front of Niffers. It's called Midtown. And Midtown has its, a little street in it called Main Street. That's downtown Midtown.
It's a great question, Connie. I was wondering the same thing. All right. Any, anything else? Do I have a move to adjourn?
A move.
All right. Give me the hold, is adjourned. I remind everybody here that we will not start our city council meeting until 7 o'clock, so there are a few minutes here before we get started. We'll call it ordered tonight's December 3rd Auburn City Council meeting. Roll call. Caitlin?
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Rizwal?
Here.
Cooley?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Smith?
President?
Taylor?
Here.
Witten?
Here.
Here. If you please rise for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invincible, with liberty and justice
Okay, being the first meeting of the month, it's our opportunity to recognize our employees who do an outstanding job for all of us here in the city of Auburn. And tonight's memorandum from recommendation comes from John Hoare, Inspection Services Director, to Megan McGowan-Crouch, Assistant City Manager, to Jim Buston, our city manager, for our employee of the month. I am pleased to nominate Chris Stokes of the Inspection Services Department as Employee of the Month. Since enjoying the Inspection Services in 2006, I have routinely observed his outstanding rapport with the contractors, citizens, and staff members he interacts with in his work as a building inspector. Chris is primarily responsible for electrical inspections on all residential and commercial construction projects. His knowledge of relevant codes and ordinances is unparalleled. In addition to electrical, he has the knowledge and skills to inspect projects for structural, plumbing, HVAC, accessibility, fire, and other building components. Chris is diligent to complete his own work and is one of the first to step up to take additional inspections to support the team when the workload is high, and to help Inspection Services maintain efficient and quality service. His customer service skills are exemplary. He is a friendly and courteous, and greets his coworkers and others with a smile on his face and a positive attitude no matter the circumstances. Even as time constraints and other pressures intensify, he's able to keep an even keel and see that inspections are conducted thoroughly and with professionalism. Chris also has the ability to break down complicated electrical theories and practices and explain them to laypersons. Earlier this year, Chris was conducting an electrical inspection at a large multifamily complex when he noticed spray foam insulation sprayed over fire collars, which are designed to seal penetrations in case of fire. This was brought to the attention of the contractor and the fire collar manufacturer, which would not certify that the collar would perform correctly with insulation in place. The situation was corrected, and the manufacturer also stated that not only was this the first time that this had ever been brought to their attention, but it would also lead to changes in the industry practices to avoid this problem. Not since, no, not once since I have been Chris's supervisor have I heard one negative comment about him. He is a fabulous employee, a huge asset to our department, and is very deserving of this recognition. It's with great pleasure that I nominate Chris Stokes as the City of Auburn's December 2019 Employee of the Month. Chris? Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it. Yep. Okay, Service Awards from Parks and Recreation. Five years, Christopher Welch. An old teammate from Public Works Maintenance, 15 years, Brian Crawford. Brian and I survived the first two years of Frank Talbert's tenure at Auburn High School. Made a man out of us, didn't he? Public Safety Police, 20 years, Bill Shalick. Okay, we have done this before. It's a habit, but it's a great habit to have. So if I'd like to ask all the ladies with Auburn High School's cross-country team and their coaches to please come forward. Y'all line up right there, ladies. How y'all doing tonight? All right, I have a resolution from the City Council. Whereas the City Council is pleased to honor Auburn City Schools, its faculty, staff, and students for their excellent achievements and contributions both inside and outside the classroom. And whereas the 2019 Auburn High School Varsity Girls Cross Country Team recently completed an extraordinary season with a new 5K record being achieved by team member Samantha Rogers. And whereas the team won first overall and top team in Alabama at the Jesse Owens Classic Meet and placed third overall at the Wingfoot Cross Country Meet. And whereas the five, whereas five seniors have committed to running college. Samantha Rogers at Auburn, Harper McGowan at Sanford, Hallie Stewart at Davidson, Gracie Buher at Troy, and Sarah Parnell at the University of Southern Mississippi. And whereas the team defended their 2017 and 2018 state championship titles by becoming the 2019 state champions, achieving three consecutive state championships for the first time in Auburn High School history. And whereas the team tied with Mountain Brook High School, if the top five runners on each team were scored, with the win being determined by the sixth runner, Elizabeth Nist, who finished before Mountain Brook's sixth runner. How about that? Where's Elizabeth? Congratulations. Get it done under pressure. That's awesome. Whereas the following individuals placed at the state championships. Samantha Rogers finished second. Harper McGowan finished fourth. Sanji Lincoln-Valees finished seventh, and Hallie Stewart finished 12th. And whereas the Auburn High School Girls Varsity Cross Country Team consists of team members, as I say your name, kind of raise your hand here. Kate Barlow, Gracie Buher, Virginia Dent, Cassie Flowers, Jordan Graham, Lessey Gray, Sonia Gutierrez, Mary Elizabeth Hadley, Connor Haynes, Chris Lynn Lane, Sanji Lincoln-Valees. I hope I did that right. If not, y'all correct me later. Harper McGowan, Alyssa Nettles, Elizabeth Nist, Sally Owens, Sarah Parnell, Mackenzie Philpott, Samantha Rogers, Izzy Seidman, Hallie Stewart, Livley Toll, and Emma Turberville. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, Auburn, Alabama, that the council hereby recognizes and formally congratulates the coaches and members of the 2019 Auburn High School Varsity Girls Cross Country Team for their outstanding achievements and their efforts in representing Auburn City Schools and the City of Auburn. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and presented to Athletic Director Dan Norton and Head Coach Olivia Toffany and the team, adopted and approved by the City Council of Auburn, Alabama this December 3, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ladies, congratulations. We're very, very proud of y'all. I thought the coach was one of the members. She looked so young. If y'all don't mind, I'd like the coach to make a few comments for us.
I wish I was still a high school student, but this was my first year getting to coach this team. And as you can tell from just the list of achievements and successes that they have had, this is a phenomenal team. They are the hardest workers I've ever seen out on the track. You'll see them running through the streets of Auburn, but they are dedicated and motivated. But most importantly, I think, one of the things that's hard to put on paper is how much these girls encourage one another. They're each other's biggest cheerleaders. They support one another, and I think that's really what's led to their success over the past few years. And we're losing a lot to incredible colleges, but we also have a lot of young girls that are coming up, and hopefully we'll be back again next year.
Thank you, ladies. We're very proud of y'all. During the committee of the whole this evening, we made a couple of appointments to the Building Board of Adjustment. We appointed Nicholas Vinsack to a term that begins soon and ends November 2, 2023. It'll be a three-year term. And to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, we appointed Ms. Dana Kemp. Judge Jim McGoffin gave his annual report to the council on all things going on in our municipal court, and we had a discussion of student housing that ended up with us asking the City Manager to put together an ordinance that we will vote on in two weeks regarding a 90-day moratorium of all purpose-built student housing. So we then can go forward and look at some alternatives and some options for us to govern student housing in the future. And so other than that, I'd like to add a few things. This past weekend, I was able to be a part of the tree lighting ceremony with Auburn University. I just appreciate their invitation and them wanting to make that a community event. It was a great event. There were so many members of Auburn, Auburn there. Our schoolchildren participated, and it was just a lot of fun Sunday afternoon. Tonight, I have on a red tie, and it's because Auburn University finished second to the University of Alabama in the food drive. And so my wager with, with Mayor of Tuscaloosa, Walt Maddox, is whoever lost would wear the other, other color tie. So I'm wearing a red tie tonight, but I am proud that we won the ballgame. And so Mayor Maddox will be sending me a check for $100 that I will give to the East Alabama Exceptional Foundation, and very proud to do that. And I appreciate Mayor Maddox having a great attitude about that and having some fun. Last weekend was just a joyful weekend. Saturday was a beautiful day, and what a great moment for our community and our university with a great victory. Speaking of football, tomorrow, the Super Seven starts, and there'll be seven high school football games played between tomorrow night and Friday night on campus. And we appreciate Auburn University and Auburn Athletic Department allowing us to come on to their campus while they're finishing up their last week of school. I would encourage our community to be aware that there'll be visitors from all over the state that'll be meandering around our community for the next three days, and I hope you'll welcome them and point them in the right direction and help them find what they need. But we're very excited about this event. This event was supposed to be in Tuscaloosa this year, but they are doing a stadium project, a stadium renovation project, and they asked Auburn to host the event this year. So we're doing it on back-to-back years, which is not normally the routine. But there'll be a lot of work done by a lot of people. In fact, Judge McGoffin helps us with our field marshaling, and we appreciate that. And there are people in this room tonight that will be helping us get through that the next couple of days. So we would encourage you to come over. There are a couple of local teams in it, and, but it is a lot of fun to watch all the kids participate in the Super Seven. And we look forward to Sunday is Auburn, City of Auburn Christmas Parade, and that should be a great time downtown, and hopefully the weather will be nice at 2:00. So we encourage our whole community to come and participate in the Christmas parade this Sunday. Anything else from the council? Any announcements?
I'd like to remind the public, I'm having a ward meeting for Ward 6 at the Public Library on Monday, December, sorry, Wednesday, December 4, 6:00 p.m.
I also would like to remind the council, I mean, to the public, that I am having a ward meeting, Ward 1, December 10, which is next Tuesday, at Borgon Community Center at 6:00. And I also wanted to say that last week, well, last council meeting, I guess, I was in San Antonio, Texas, at the National League of Cities, and I really enjoyed the conference. And I want to tell Judge McGoffin that I actually went to a, one of the... Sessions. There you go. Help me. One of the sessions on municipality courts, and I learned a lot. I actually met the judge, where's, is he still in here? No. Well, anyway, I actually met the judge from Birmingham, who did a great presentation. And they have a lot of great things that they do in Birmingham. But I really enjoyed the conference. I learned a lot, and I'm looking forward to going to the one in Washington, DC.
Thank you, Connie. Anybody else on council?
Mayor, I'd like to say tonight I commend our police division for the work they did in the Blanchard case. It was a very big tragedy that happened in the community. I know what it's like to investigate one of those type cases, and I know how they feel tonight and what they had to go through. I also would like to call upon the state legislature to pass some new legislation where people like that suspect cannot get out of jail to do the kind of crimes they do. I think it's a travesty that he was on the streets, especially the streets of Auburn, and my heart goes out to those families tonight. I cannot imagine, being a father of a daughter myself, I cannot imagine how they're going to get, they can just talk to Christmas without their daughter. And it's, I know it's going to be tough on them, but my thoughts and prayers are with them, and I just really appreciate our police force and the work they did. And I also had an encounter with the Fire Division. It's hard for an old police officer to give a fireman credit for anything, but, but I had a young man who left the road at my house in a very bad accident, and I was very, at first, we couldn't even see him. We hadn't, my dad hadn't hear him moaning, and found out he was in the woods, out of sight. But the Auburn Fire Division showed up and just really did an outstanding job along with the police. I was very impressed with the Fire Division. Got it, they got in there and got him out quickly and got him on a helicopter and off to Columbus, I assume, but can't say enough good about those guys tonight either. So thank you to all the public safety people that work, do the hard work.
Thank you, Connie. I know we all agree with what you had to say tonight, certainly our thoughts and prayers with the Blanchard family. Our police staff did a wonderful job. We're grateful. Those are tough circumstances. Anything else?
On that note, I do want to say something regarding that. I just ask people to please be safe, because there's so much going on, not only in other cities, but here in Auburn also. So, you know, it's wise to not, you know, be alone, and especially at night, well, daytime either now. But I'm just asking everybody to, you know, just be safe when you're out there in the, in the streets or in public or, or even at home, you know, because we see what can happen. And it's, like you said, it was a tragedy for a family to even have to go through that, and I can't even imagine. So, I mean, we know it, but we cannot imagine it if it hadn't happened to you. So advice to everybody and anybody that you know that's not in here tonight, just let them know, you know, we got to, we got to be mindful of our surroundings, and we got to be very careful as to the people that we associate with.
Thank you, Connie. Yes, very well said.
Thank you.
I'll take that often.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the council? Okay, Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, council. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. First, I would like to thank Mayor Anders and everyone that came out to the holiday lighting ceremony on Sunday night. That was a great way to kick off the holiday season with students and members of the Auburn community. Auburn raised 229,000 pounds of food in this year's Beat Bama Food Drive, but fell short of Alabama's 278,000 pounds. We enjoyed seeing our two schools unite over a great, a great cause. Mayor Anders, we're sorry that we couldn't prevent you having to wear that awful tie tonight.
Appreciate your sympathy, Jay.
Yep, of course. Auburn once again hosted Fall Feast, an event that allows students who might not be able to attend a traditional Thanksgiving dinner. We had over 500 students attend and look forward to continuing this event. This week, we will be having Ring Night to celebrate the Auburn Ring and its Fall 2019 recipients. At the end of the fall and spring semesters, students who have completed over 75 hours can be a part of a longstanding tradition that is unique to Auburn. At Ring Night, the rings are left in the Auburn Seal from 1856 or 6:56 p.m. until the current graduation year. This symbolizes the rings absorbing all of Auburn's history from founding to present. Ring Night is open to the public and will be held this upcoming Thursday at 6:56 in front of Landon Hall. Music and light refreshments will be, will be provided. That's all I've got for y'all this week. As always, if there's anything I can do for y'all, let me know. War Eagle.
Good luck on finals. Okay, this time it's Citizens Communications on items on the agenda. Remember, these are just items that are on our agenda tonight, and if you'd please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to the council.
And I apologize. I always seem to show up in my yard clothes. Sorry about that, but Carolyn Carr, 342 Payne Street, for the neighborhood group in Payne Street, Pine Dale, and Hare Avenue. We continue to be concerned about the proposal to, at the corner of Armstrong and Sanford, to convert from a two-bedroom home to an 18-room apartment with all the accompanying parking. We're concerned for several reasons. One, of course, the traffic problems that already exist on Sanford Avenue several times a day are bad enough as it is without throwing even many more people into that mix. We're concerned because it's also so close to a large school. And of course, we have, it's within a half-block of several homes that have been renovated in recent years as we're, as this has been occurring throughout our neighborhood. Quite frankly, the home next to me right now is under renovation, and we're concerned that this whole area is being kind of, being overbuilt. We would respectfully like to ask that this conditional use be tabled until the city can in fact look at this proposed, go through this proposed ordinance to take a larger look at student housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda tonight does involve the, the development that Ms. Carr was mentioning. There is no public hearing, so if you'd like to speak to that, I encourage you to come forward now.
Bill Kasky, 521 East Sanford. Two things. One, the development that Ms. Carr just addressed. In the documents that were in the e-packet, it talks about size, scope, and scale, and the planning commission said that it was not in keeping with the area. So I look at that and wonder, well, why would you vote yes? Does it conform to all regulations and ordinances? I don't think it can with parking, and it has to have 20 spaces, and it's supposed to be within the footprint, not encroaching on the setbacks. It also is supposed to have overflow parking available, which the only place would be on Armstrong. Why would you vote yes when it can't comply? Health, safety, and welfare. I think it was a month ago when ADDU in Northwest Auburn was denied conditional use for health, safety, and welfare. That was probably a three- or four-bedroom property, not an 18-bedroom property. So why would you vote yes when the health, safety, and welfare is even worse on this property? Carolyn mentioned traffic, the traffic on Sanford, the people that avoid the corner of Gay in Sanford by turning down Armstrong to go over to Thatch to cut back up, or to cut back up to Gay or to, to college. Why would you vote yes and add more traffic? It went before the Design Review Board. And I would challenge that the Design Review Board had two architects who are... And I would challenge that the Design Review Board had two architects who are friends of or workmates of the architect that drew it. They both should have recused themselves. It's improper to review your own workmate, friend, it's just, it's beyond imagination that you would allow that to not have been recused, so that you don't have the appearance of impropriety. Neighbors. The neighbors have spoken out in emails and in person, whether it's on Wrights Mill Road, Armstrong, Moore Avenue, Pinedale, Payne Street, solely, exclusively against this development. So, why would you vote yes when the neighbors don't want it? You talked about overbuilt student housing. We just spent 45 minutes, you've got 37,000 beds for 31,000 students, that's like a 23% overbuilt situation already. Why would you approve more on a conditional use? And then, I get frustrated with the drawing that I don't think you could look at that and say, this represents something that I can look at and determine how it fits in the neighborhood. So, I would hope you guys would, I hope you had a chance to walk that area. It's a .23 of an acre, less than a quarter-acre lot, an 18-bedroom, 18-bathroom, big building, doesn't belong on it. And Mr. Buston today, when he was asked a question about, I think Ms. Whitney, you asked the question about what goes on there, or not that property in particular, but in the moratorium, and he says, well, private dormitories like big buildings. That's a big building. So, I, I hope you'll vote no. I'd like to shift to one other thing. I felt like deja vu all over again when we started talking about a moratorium. Was it three years ago, four years ago, after 160 Ross was built, and Mayor Hamm said, that's an abomination, there'll never be another building like that. Since then, we've had at least a half a dozen, one of which is surrounded in scaffolding because it was poor construction and has fallen down. You got another one coming online on Glenn, that's another 800 beds, and, you know, I interpreted Colonel Griswold's comments that you've, you've given the builders now a two-week window with which they're going to rush their plans in, so they can get in the grandfather. So, it's very disappointing. I applaud taking action to look at what should we do, whether that's limiting buildings to 200-bed maximums, or, you know, you'll come up with whatever the answers are, but it's frustrating to review this again, three years later, another moratorium about student housing. So, I go back to 355 Armstrong. Why approve a conditional use when they can build whatever they can build on the, by right? Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? Thing to do with our agenda tonight. Yes, sir.
I don't have an agenda, this is my first meeting, but my concern is safety.
We need your name and address, sir.
My name is Bobby Welsh.
Okay.
Retired military, and I live at 913 Hollis Road. My biggest concern is safety. We've known there's street walkers in our neighborhood. Anywhere we got to go, we got to walk in the street, no sidewalks or anything, and you have four bus stops, one on Twin Falls in the morning, and one at the corner of Bruce. And most of the time in the morning, I had talked to the police a couple times, first bus come out about 20 minutes to 7:00. And sometime between bus stop, some idiot gonna come to the neighborhood flying, and don't have no concern about kids and stuff. And I had talked to them, it's a, sort of being top of the hill of the Cal Street, the kids, when they come out, they come down the hill, and you got a blind side, across the bus stop right there. I had talked to them, about giving them speed bump, they said ain't no traffic, but just waiting for something to happen, because them kids, when they come across the road, they don't even really really look. They not no crosswalk or nothing there, anything, and not no bus stop or anything there. And another thing, on all this stuff with the lace going on, people's knocking on my door every other day. But since then, see, I don't take no opportunity, open up the data news, so I don't know what's going on, so this is why I had to come down here. By being military, I look at things different, always, anything you in charge, you got to always look at it and see what's going on. So, nobody never knock on our doors, or none of those around there, because most people got kids and everything, and they getting schoolwork and everything, and they can't afford to be down here at 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And if you'll come down there at night, from Twin Falls to Hollis Road, it's a branch there, it's so dark, you can't hardly see your hand out, and people's always walking their dog. People walking there, or exercising at night, walking street, and ain't no hit there at all, ain't no light at all. But just like I say, I can't take out wide, no sidewalks, never been put on that street right there. First thing, somebody gonna get hit, which really, but that's my biggest concern.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Actually, we should have asked you to come to the later part of our agenda tonight and talk about citizens' open forum, this was a time to talk about things that are on our agenda. I would encourage you, and I respect your concern about safety in your neighborhood. City manager, would, would it be okay if we referred him to have a meeting with you to talk about those things in the neighborhood, and you can make some recommendations, and talk about some ideas from sidewalks and speed bumps and that kind of stuff?
We can have staff contact him.
Absolutely. So, we'll have staff contact you, make sure before you leave here tonight that you give your contact information to the city manager, okay?
Okay, thanks, man.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
I guess I'm a little confused, what, what street are you talking about? What, what area?
The Cal, the lights, the streetlights are very dim. It's, it's, it's all right. I'm teary, I'm just like.
That's fine.
The, the lights are real dim, and it's dark, you can't see anything. I take my dog out, it's kind of scary, it's those dogs, you really can't see it at the end of the street. I think in that, on Hollins and on the Cal, the light, the streetlights need to be brighter.
Anyone else who'd like to talk to the council about items that are on the agenda Okay, senior, city manager's communications.
Under city manager's communication this evening, we have a couple of boards with vacancies. We have one vacancy on the Water Works Board, the term will begin January 20th, 2020, and end January 19th, 2023. This appointment will be, will be made at the January 7th, 2020 City Council meeting. We also have three vacancies on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. These terms will begin January 21st, 2020, and end January 20th, 2023. These appointments also will be made at the January 7th, 2020 City Council meeting. Our next order of business this evening is the consent agenda. Are there any council members who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item separately?
Take 8D3.
Did you say 8D as in Delta, number 3? Okay.
And I want to do 8D as in Delta 5.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove 8 Delta 6, 8D6, please. All right, anyone else? So, I believe we have 8D3, 8D5, and 8D6, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Item 8D3 is PF Moon and Company. It is a contract for $4,455,000 for an additional clarifier at the H.C. Morgan Water Pollution Control Facility.
Can you just give a little more details?
Just get a motion, sir.
Sorry.
May for approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Can you just give a little more detail into what that is? It's a lot of money to be spending, and just make sure the public is aware of what this is.
I'll let Eric, this is a clarifier clarifies, but I'll let him explain what that is.
Thank you. Okay, yes, I don't know if you've been to the H.C. Morgan plant, but there's three rather large circular clarifiers out there that are the last part of the treatment process. And what we want to do with this is build a fourth clarifier to help us during high-flow events, to prevent E. coli from escaping the basins and getting into the creek. This was identified in our 2015 master plan that CH2M Hill did for us, and that's the major part of it, it's a big concrete structure.
These are those, those great big round things that have little things moving in them, they have a rake that moves in them, and they go round and round until the water's clear, and the clear water comes out at the side.
Yeah, we take the sludge out of the bottom of them and run that through a filter press, but the clear water that comes out of the clarifier is what's disinfected and then goes to the creek. When we have major, major storm events, we have sometimes struggled maintaining compliance, and this will give us some back to safety there. And also, if we were to lose one of our current three clarifiers, it really puts us in some issues when we have heavy storm events, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Budgeted item, correct?
Correct. And this comes out of the sewer fund, this does not come out of the general fund.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Item 8D5 is a purchase of a pavilion for Sam Harris Park in the amount of $48,013.78.
All right, do we have a motion?
May for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Connie?
Well, my question is, is just, and it may be in the packet, but what is, you know, this pavilion, is it similar to the one that's already out there? And what is the start date for this?
It is, it is very, very similar, if not exactly like the ones all, that's already there. It was identified as, as a need, since that current pavilion is used a lot, there's another one. The start date, Becky, do you have?
I'm not sure what the delivery date on the pavilion would be, but the intent is that it would be, would be installed sometime in the early spring.
Now, now, Becky, is, is this going to be located, it, what, what's, where's the location of it? Is it, is it near the old pavilion, or?
It's going to, it's going to be across the creek.
Okay.
You would cross the bridge, there would be a parking lot in the pavilion, and then there would be a sidewalk which would go to the bridge, so people using, either could use the restrooms that are already there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Becky. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 8D6 is a professional services agreement with Gonzales Strength and Associates for the design of the Auburn Soccer Complex, and a cost of $563,013.
May for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question about the optional services that are listed. It says that the, it's a function, 1% of the total budget, project budget, and it says the total project budget is $7.4 million. What, what all does that include?
Oh, wow, it includes.
Well, I mean, is that, is that the overall soccer field from start to finish, or is that part of the overall Parks and Recreation Plan, or?
No, no, that's the soccer portion of the Parks and Recreation Plan. It was identified as, as having seven-plus million dollars to add a new field, I think, add restrooms. Becky, do you want to address that?
That's not the same as this.
The total project is to add three additional outdoor fields, to add a restroom at the entrance part of the facility, so there's, it's convenient for the people on the fields closest to the road. It also includes a multipurpose building that would be used for indoor soccer, but could also be used for basketball practices, or other, like, social programs that, that we have.
All right, so what we're asking, being asked to approve this evening is just the design aspect of $563,000 and change.
Correct.
All right. And the overall project for the soccer field is estimated at $7.4 million, 7.413, whatever is on here.
That's what was budgeted for the project, yes.
And, so this is optional toward this amount, so it'd be optional over and above the 563?
The contract is for $563,013, that's it.
So, this optional part, that may or may not be part of this contract, it may be something down the road that we're asked to look at later. You have an optional amount of $74,001% of the 7.4 million.
That's included in.
I don't know why that's in here, is what I'm, what I'm getting at.
I think that's included in the 56313, again.
I don't think it is when you add it up.
Hold on, the city engineer.
Okay.
This is from the capital projects.
Yeah, that, that's, that price is to include some additional services that may be needed during design that have not been identified now. We've been discussing upgrading a water line and some other design features, so we don't have to come back to the council. So, it's more of a contingency.
It looks like it's the, your fee basis is the 7.4 million, and so that's where they're identifying the 1% at 74 for those additional services. Is that a good interpretation of that?
That's correct.
So, this 74 is included in this contract we're looking at today for $563,000?
Yes.
May or may not use that, that portion of the?
I would expect that we will, but yes.
It's not.
Oh, hang on one second.
That's what I thought, it's not in there, it's not in the 500. I'm curious why that is a function of this particular action that we're being asked to approve tonight? Is that just extraneous information for future use?
No, it's, it's so that we, whenever we do these projects, we want to make sure that we are looking at not just the project itself, but other things that may have to be done while the project is underway, that would help us with, with either additional projects, or if we have identified some enhancement that needs to be done, or could possibly be done, even if this project wasn't going to happen. So, we try to combine these things, and I think what the city engineer was saying is that we have, we have identified some water and, water and what other issues?
Yes, any other design contingency items, but it is not included in the 563.
Right. So, there are some things in there that says, we're asking you for 56313, and then evidently, since it's not part of that, there could possibly be 74,000 more if we ask them to design the other parts of this.
Which we would have to approve.
We would have to approve at a later date, then.
You would not have to approve it at a later date if you approved this tonight, is that correct?
I'm curious.
The resolution, in my, the resolution is for 563.
Right.
Which is the 490 basic architectural fees, plus the 72 and some change supplemental fees, the 74 is additional, if we need it.
It's additional, it's also negotiating a price, it's putting it in this contract, should we need it, it locks it down at this percentage. That's the important part about why it's in here right now.
But we're not technically approving that tonight, we're just approving 563. If we have to come back and, and pick up the 74, we will approve that separately, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to get.
But this is just for our information, that we are negotiating this, this is a possibility.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items that have been taken off of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, please. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has been approved.
We have no ordinances this evening, and under resolutions, we have item 10A, is Travis Campbell seeking conditional use approval for a private dormitory on property located at 355 Armstrong Street. This item was postponed from the November 4th, 2019 regular meeting.
Another council has received some information when we got here tonight, some updated elevations of the building, some updated floor plans of the building, and I'm sure we all had a very quick look before the meeting started tonight. I'm not sure how the council feels about moving forward with this information being Beginning discussion, do we have a motion? Any motion to approve? I move to approve. A second? Motion in a second. Are there any questions for the city manager or the staff? Now, I know that there's a representative from the, the owner here. Since there has been some changes, I certainly am okay with the owner's representative coming forward and discussing some of those changes. Is that all right with the council? Everybody okay with that? So, representative from the- So if a representative from the owner would like to come forward and talk about this, is that something you'd like to do? If not, we can just ask you questions if we have them.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any questions for representative of the owner? Does anybody have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The diagram that's in our packet, there's a 15-foot rear setback on the diagram, which basically is about one-third of the way through the space for the parking, with the other two-thirds being beyond the rear setback. And then there's a fence proposed as well. So I'm assuming that the parking goes about 10 feet beyond the rear setback, and then plus that, you have the fence. So is this going to require a variance or something in order to exceed the setback?
No, sir. The, the building is the only thing that's required to meet the setback requirements.
So the parking lot can exceed the setback, and the fence can exceed the setback?
Yes, sir.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah, most fences, most people put their fences right on the property line.
Right. Reading the, the analysis from staff, it says the proposed development would have been permitted, let's see, I'm sorry, the proposed development would have been a permitted use as townhomes if it had been submitted prior to the aforementioned zoning ordinance amendment. But it was not. Is that accurate?
That's correct. It was deemed to be a private dormitory. That's why it's before you tonight.
That's all I have for, for right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Forrest, what, what would be permitted? I've asked this question before, I just wanted to spend a little time, but what would be permitted?
Residentially?
Yes.
Just about anything but a private dorm.
All right. How many beds would be permitted? What kind of density would be permitted?
Well, the bed density in this district is 85 beds per acre. This proposal is well within that parameter. There were some discussions about what it would take for these to be deemed to be townhouses, and what that would take would be a number of different changes to the floor plan configuration in order to qualify for that, which, that was made known to the applicant. The applicant opted to not pursue that particular option and to pursue the private dorm option.
Procedurally, if it's, if it were to be denied tonight on the conditional use, can the applicant reapply for something, or can they, is there any kind of waiting period per law that they, not to come back?
Only if they wanted to come back for this would there be a waiting period. If, if they get turned down tonight and they come back in tomorrow with the townhouse plan that meets the requirements for a townhouse, it's permitted by right.
Any other questions, comments?
I have just some comments, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Kaski's representation, the various reasons why it's not appropriate, particularly in light of the fact that we have just went, gone through a whole discussion on how we're overbuilt. The private dormitories were specifically excluded from this area, and now we want to come in after the fact and ask for conditional use to, to do something that we specifically did not choose to do. So again, I, I agree and support Mr. Kaski's characterization of the various reasons to disapprove it.
Anyone else on the council? This is a resolution, so this, we'll do this by voice vote. All right, so all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion carries.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one additional item, item 11A. I'm sorry about that. Is the Plaza Bar and Lounge requesting a Class 1 alcohol beverage license on property located at 800 Main Street in the Midtown Development?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions in the council?
This is a bar and lounge. Does it require, are there any food requirements or age requirements?
It is actually a restaurant.
It's a restaurant?
It is a bar restaurant, yes.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that the, the applicants have a violations on, on file, and they were a long, long time ago. I understand that. I just wonder if Public Safety has any comment on this application?
They did not.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. One, one opposition. Okay.
Now, those are all the items we have on the agenda.
Okay. At this time, as opportunity for Citizens Open Forum, where you can come to the council and address us with anything that's on your mind, please give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to do that. Seeing no one, we'll close that period of time. So moved to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.